Located on Camelback Road. Development Services Director Christopher Baker and Engineering Director Sumit Mohan will present. Gunnar?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Pleased to have the team here with us this evening. Sumit and Luke Albert are city traffic engineers, so thank you all. We're gonna tag-team this approach if it's an appropriate approach, Mayor. So first of all, I'd just like to orient Council and provide some facts about the location of the project and what is proposed. The general location of the project is north of Camelback Road, east of 303. It's immediately south of Luke Air Force Base. And you'll notice here, and you can see in the image... Where's the pointer? There it is. Oops. Go back a slide, excuse me. This is Palm Valley. This is the subject property, and it's roughly seventeen hundred and twenty-five feet from the corner of the property, the eastern corner of the property, to the closest residential property line. The property on this map is shown where the... Or the subject property is where the X is. Just to give you some further clarification and context of the proposed project, south of it, across Camelback Road, is the Camelback Center Project. That used to be part of PV303, but it broke off. It is under separate ownership by Sunbelt Holdings out of San Diego. It is zoned PAD and permits by right industrial and warehouse-type development. There is a restriction adjacent to Charles Boulevard that still maintains, that was enacted by Council many years ago, that provides a transitionary land use buffer between the residential here in Palm Valley and the larger, more intense industrial projects here. The stipulation, essentially a very high level, limits the height of the building and limits the uses to like offices and things of that nature. So the intent was to not have truck traffic and so forth along Charles Boulevard. And this image is from the marketing material that's produced by the owner. To the south and west of the project, so the project, the proposed project is just off the map right over here, where if you can see where the cursor is moving, to the south and west is PV303. Here's UPS. Sorry for that. I don't know why that's moving. Here's UPS. This is XPO with Boeing. Thank you, Sumit. Disappeared again. Yeah, it may need a battery. XPO, which is Boeing, and then some additional buildings. The yellow buildings are future. They're not constructed yet. And of course, PV303, as we all know, allows industrial warehouse by right. And along Charles Boulevard is also those same restrictions as in... As on that Sunbelt property with that one-story building, the office limitation, again, to provide that transitionary buffer between the residents in Palm Valley and the more intense industrial projects to the north. The subject property here is, again, outlined in yellow, and you can see the end of Luke Air Force Base, the runway, and there's different shades of... Thank you. Maybe that'll help. Not yet. There's different shades of red there, and those represent the accident potential zones off the edge of the runway. APZ-1 is a construction prohibition because that is the area most likely in the event of an accident off the runway that could be impacted. And you can see in the northwest corner of the yellow rectangle, there is a little bit of APZ-1 in that subject property. So they can utilize it for stormwater, things of that nature, just not construct a building. You'll also notice that that APZ-1 goes south of Camelback Road. See if the pointer's gonna work. Yep, there is a pointer. Good, thank you. So this APZ-1 comes south of Camelback Road, and so in this area right in here is a prohibition of construction. And that's why on this build... On this plan, you see these buildings are angled because of that, the way that impacts the subject property. You'll also notice the contour lines there. Those are sound contour lines, which limits where residential can go. No residential can go within those sound contours. The 65 decibel contour is exactly following Charles Boulevard. So the project that's proposed is just a little bit more than seventy-three acres. It's currently located in the county. As we know from our previous discussions, Glendale has a ten-foot strip that runs on the north side of Camelback Road. The proposed project seeks to annex into the city of Glendale and also to zone it for industrial use. The project that's proposed, and this is conceptual, subject to change, but there are two buildings that are proposed, one of seven hundred and thirty-one thousand square feet and the other about four hundred and thirty thousand square feet. That's a combined total of one... A little over 1.1 million. Just for comparison purposes, UPS is approximately 1.1 million. There's also 420 trailer parking spaces proposed and parking spaces for about 750 or 740 cars. So we received notice of the project from the city of Glendale on May 20th. Glendale provides notice to property owners within 300 feet. If you remember, the city of Goodyear, we do 500 feet, so our notice area is larger than Glendale's. It is... This project is proposed to go to the Glendale Planning Commission on June 4th, and then likewise to this Glendale City Council meeting on June 23rd. And I'm gonna turn it over to Sumit and Luke.
Thank you, Christopher. Mayor and Council, in this project at this stage, basically, as Christopher said, this is all conceptual at this point, and most of the information that we have is really regarding the site plan. The main component for this project, as you can all imagine, would be the traffic impact assessment, which would be the main point that is important on all these developments on Camelback Road. And as far as the other engineering review requirements are concerned, all the off-site plans will be reviewed by the city of Goodyear before we... And all the reports that are associated with that, we will review all those before issuing any permits in the right of way. But for the most part, it's the traffic impacts and related to Camelback Road, for which I have invited our city traffic engineer, Luke Albert, to get into more details.
Okay. Thank you, Sumit. Okay, if you can advance it, that'd be great. So this graphic shows Camelback Road between 152nd Avenue and Loop 303. And the areas shown in blue are areas where there has been a half-street improvement construction on the south side. And the areas shown in red is where Camelback Road is just one lane each direction and unimproved. The... So the PV303 project constructed a half-street improvement along their frontage between Loop 303 and Cervel Avenue, and the Palm Valley 5 development also constructed the south-half-street improvement to just west of 152nd Avenue. And the area in between those improvements is the old county road, is one lane each direction. And so the city of Goodyear has been coordinating with McDott, Glendale, as well as the developers, about a comprehensive solution to Camelback Road that would make full improvements between 152nd Avenue and Loop 303 to provide the lanes needed for all this traffic being generated by the existing developments, plus these proposed developments along Camelback on both sides. We're kind of in the early stages of those discussions right now, but there's... Everybody understands that need of the comprehensive solution as opposed to just each developer improving their frontage and leaving us with a scalloped street that still functions as one lane in each direction. So Goodyear will continue to take the lead on that discussion with the county in Glendale and these other developers, and will obviously, you know, commit... You know, we'll commit our resources to help the cause as long as everybody else is also committing their resource to help the cause, and we'll bring in additional discussion for the council as that progresses.
Mayor, when are we gonna ask questions? At the end?
Can answer questions anytime.
All right, we're gonna allow it. Go ahead. It's pertinent.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I have a question on this one. Just so that I can get the boundaries in my head. This is south of what is going through right now with FedEx, right? This is separate.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Mayor Lord, Councilmember Campbell, the FedEx is where that golf course is shown on the eastern, the far right side of that slide, so like, right there, perfect. Thank you, Christopher.
Yeah, okay. It's right beside it. So not only are we concerned about that site and the traffic, now they're coming to us again with even more.
Correct.
So this is a big deal.
Absolutely. And each traffic study, as developments submit traffic studies, they include their traffic plus developments, plus traffic by the developments, so they continue to build on each other. So these traffic studies will, you know, the traffic state for this would include the FedEx traffic, the next development would include both those, so you get this total traffic of all the existing traffic and all the proposed traffic as well together in these traffic studies.
And we're running our own traffic studies ourselves?
We review... There's county requirements for the traffic stays that we follow, and they're required to submit traffic studies per the county requirements, and we do a very thorough review of those traffic studies to make sure that they meet all the requirements and they provide the improvements that are needed so that growth pays for growth.
I'm just so concerned about the housing, the impact on residents of Goodyear.
Absolutely.
And how it's going to drastically change their quality of life, and that's what I'm concerned about. Not only is the road not built to even handle anything like that, but just the noise level and everything else. I know... Yeah. And it's going before... They're planning and zoning June 4th?
Yeah, this week, on Thursday of this week is the P&amp;Z, and then the 23rd of June is their council.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, the comprehensive solution we're talking about is what helps make sure that, you know, we don't negatively impact the residents with these projects.
Since that question was asked, is any more questions on the traffic? All right. Brennan?
I don't know if that... I'm not sure if there's a number for this or not, but is there... What's this road at current state rated, and what does the traffic study say is gonna be and can? I doubt this road here can handle it. What's the delta in current road and projected road via all the cumulation of all the traffic studies?
So right now, the road is one lane each direction, and it doesn't have any turn lanes in a lot of places.
Yeah.
Through this section, it'll be, you know, per our transportation master plan, our standards, it's gonna be three lanes each direction with the median, so you'd have the turn lanes, the three lanes each direction. And so far, we've only seen the traffic study for the FedEx development, and we're still working through review comments with them, but we'll see that these comments... We'll see this development next, and we certainly expect with all these developments that those three lanes each direction will be needed.
Will be.
Once this is built out.
Okay. So we don't have like a number of vehicles, but we know we'll need at least four more lanes, two on one side, two on the other side, and then cutouts and turn lanes and everything alongside that. So it's significantly under... It's not ready for that yet, obviously.
Correct. That's correct.
And then do we know if this project particularly, do they have a certain percent, like the other one where they're supposed to go east versus west? I think there was a certain percentage in the last one, they mentioned that.
The last one was ninety percent west and ten percent east, and while we haven't seen the traffic study, we certainly would expect with such a similar land use and the freeway to the west, we certainly expect something similar.
Okay. Okay.
Joe?
When you also do the study, my biggest concern too is the traffic that's gonna be heading west, but also you have the area south of that, which is also gonna be industrial, which is also gonna add to the traffic.
Yeah.
So whatever the study do, you gotta... I think you gotta make sure that that is taken into consideration, make sure that roadway is wide enough to get that flow west and moving as opposed from a sound stamp point where it gets backed up, so... That would be my concern, because it's not just that, it's also what's gonna be south of that.
Okay. And I got... Absolutely.
Yeah, no, go around here.
I think just on the traffic, we've... We're not having any discussion, and I realize we don't own the property, et cetera, but east of Palm Valley, that's north of Camelback, so that eastern portion that is in Litchfield Park, is that actually Litchfield Park-controlled roadway, or is that McDott roadway? Camelback east, between Litchfield and our city limit, is that McDott or is that Litchfield Park?
It's a Litchfield Park-controlled roadway. Yeah, we... As you mentioned, we control, Vice Mayor, as you mentioned, we control Camelback Road to the kind of east end of Palm Valley 9, and then east of there, it's a Litchfield Park-controlled roadway. So, and that's currently a two-lane section as well.
I'm sorry.
It's a two-lane... It's a two-lane roadway section as well in that area.
So is Litchfield Park part of this master plan conversation about the roadway?
They have not been to date just because the major traffic impacts are anticipated between Loop 303 and 152nd Avenue, but we could certainly bring them into discussion to...
Yeah, so is this a partnership between the company at Litchfield and Goodyear for the road and the cost?
Yeah, because I think one of the things, and I'll get to it just like Christopher, but I think one of the things that, you know, we all focus on, what's gonna happen between this project and the 303, which is entirely within our city, and we control all the roadway plus 10 feet. It's the section of... It's those 10 percent, and 10 percent of 10,000 trucks or 10,000 vehicles is still 1,000 vehicles. And when that roadway is only one lane in each direction, we're gonna create a regional problem eastbound that we will have fixed westbound, but we're still gonna have this other thing. So I think this comprehensive piece really has to include everybody from a transit perspective or from a roadway perspective, rather, not... And looking forward, so I wanna hear a little bit about that as well, and then I'll talk about the merits of the project at the end.
Christopher, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief point of clarification. Last week, when we was communicating with Glendale staff, this notice area here did not include Litchfield Park, so I asked them if they had provided notice to the city of Litchfield Park, and at that time, they had not, but they were going to. So out of deference to Litchfield Park, I'm not sure that maybe until very recently, like today or the end of last week, excuse me, that they were aware of this particular project. So just a point of clarification for you.
Sherry?
I know this was brought up when we talked about the other project further down the road about the signals, and I just wanna make sure that we're planning ahead for that so that as this traffic grows and asks in or out, or however the traffic study shows that, we make sure that there's the shared signal that we're not... It doesn't come on our dime when all said, because that's gonna be a lot of traffic coming from outside of the city that will have to cross into the city. So that's my concern, 'cause I know how, right now, it may not be that much, but as it grows, it's gonna be a lot of traffic there.
And...
Brennan?
I'm sorry. You can answer that. You can answer that.
Yeah, so Councilmember Loretano, any signal like strictly associated with that development is paid for by that developer. For example, the UPS signal that just went in just east of 303 was paid for 100 percent by UPS, or actually was... It was a combination of UPS and then Sunbelt on the south paid for it. So those driveway traffic signals are completely funded by the developer, and then the ones that are major streets and so forth in between would then be the city, the county, Glendale, different jurisdictions would end up sharing some of the costs, but definitely would not just be on the city of Goodyear.
Thank you.
I had a follow-up question too.
Go ahead.
Oh, I thought you pointed at me, sorry.
We have a couple people ahead that have been waiting, but go ahead.
All right. So the contour lines that you had in the previous slides, I just wanted to verify, I know our section, so can there be any more of these past that, or is that contour line block it all the way to the 303 there? Am I looking at the right line there?
So there... This map is showing, Mayor, Council, this map is showing two different points of information, if you will. The accident protection zone, so in this, I'm gonna call, and I'm not real good with color, so excuse me, a light salmon color.
Yeah.
Pretty close.
That's good.
Okay, thank you. This is where the prohibition of construction and occupied buildings takes place. And then these lines are the noise contours that are based on the sound that comes off the planes taking off and landing off the end of the runway. And so residential is prohibited beyond the 65 decibel.
Departure. It's a southern departure.
Yes, Mayor.
So, I mean, there's already buildings in that pink, like REI and other things down there.
There's a lighter pink here and a darker pink.
Okay.
So this is APZ... This is called APZ-2, and you can have certain types of land uses there, but not residential, not schools, not retail, but you can have industrial.
Okay. So I'm just making sure I'm looking right. So that mid-color pink in the middle there, that section, so we can't want to see any more traffic from more buildings going in west of the one we're talking about currently?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Molly?
So if I can just ask for clarification, are we talking according to Vice Mayor's tip from Litchfield Road to 303 on Camelback? Are we going that far? Are we just going from the project to 303? What are the discussions going to be?
So far, it has been... We're very preliminary in discussions. We've really been reaching out ever since this FedEx project was presented to us, like I think it was about six weeks ago or so. And so right now, it's been the Loop 303 to the 152nd Avenue area right now, but we can certainly extend those discussions further east.
I think you need to get that on the table right now, and I'll tell you why, because at Litchfield Road and Camelback, when you're going north towards Luke and you turn left, you've got La Loma right there, and you've got doctor offices, and it is two lanes, and then all of a sudden, it gets skinnier. But if we're gonna improve that road, we need that entire roadway improved and improved for safety reasons. And we won't go back and redo it if we're not talking about it early on. And I think if we've got that ability to have that in that conversation, it should be included. It really should be.
Do you think so, Bill?
Okay, thank you.
Laura? Go ahead.
Well, it appears after decades of a little two-lane country road that this is about to become a major transportation thoroughfare. And I would agree, I think we have to take a holistic look from 303 all the way to Litchfield, because once you cross over Litchfield, I think it's two or three lanes, at least for a bit.
It's two lanes.
Two lanes, okay. But it's a nice wide road and such. So did you say that at build-out or what you would... We're gonna have so much development and so much industrial, likely warehouses and things, and so we have to anticipate there's gonna be a lot of traffic. So we're not gonna be doing it piecemeal, right? We're gonna be taking a holistic look, you know, not project by project, but what this corridor could look out... Look like at build-out?
Yeah, Councilmember Kino, absolutely, we want this to be a comprehensive solution and to be the full, like, basically what I'm gonna call the Indian School cross-section to the south, where you do have the three lanes, the median, and the three lanes in the direction all at once. That's certainly how we plan to approach this project.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask a question. So how do we know when they would build out the... They would do the road? Okay, so we have a timeframe construction, and so are they gonna wait until the building is done before they start that road? Or when would they be doing that? Because there's gonna be... So are they gonna travel at all to 303 back and forth, or are they going to go all the way to the corners of Camelback and Litchfield? Not Camelback, I gave the wrong room. But right to the corner, the four corners? See, I don't know, this is the same thing I had on the other one, is that they're a short distance from 303 that goes to I-10 and goes to other ones. And so I think the road needs to be improved all the way, because there are times I'm gonna sure that they're gonna need that, but it seems like the industrial side, and I guess you can't tell them what to do, but it would be to me, and I'm not in Glendale, so I'm not the one that's going to be voting on this. I understand why they want the location, okay, that, you know, they have the right to that, but I don't understand why there isn't concern together of all of us to get that road in shape. And so that's where I'm coming from, and I don't know how we would do that, but I can tell you, if they wait until the building goes up, like so many of our other things, I don't know what could happen between the timeframe. So, you know, I'm not voting on this, I'm not, you know, on this, but I am concerned about people and safety. And so I'll put it that way, for all the three cities, it's very important.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, you may, Chris.
I think as Mr. Albert alluded to, the city's approach is comprehensive from one end to the other. There's many various different property owners and also the county, and also the city of Glendale. And so our charge is to bring everybody together to look comprehensively at that entire roadway. And that's the approach that Mr. Albert and Sumit are wanting to advocate for. And in relates... In relation to your question, Mayor, about when the roadways are improved, excuse me, the offsites need to be constructed in conjunction with the building so that there's the infrastructure to support it. And so that should goes along with the Falcon Golf Course project and this proposed project in Glendale. And so we have partners here that we need to pull together to work on, work together, and frankly, there is... That road is a city road, so these traffic reports, as Mr. Albert alluded to, come through us for review and approval, along with the associated offsite roadway construction documents. And so we have the ability of pulling everybody together and finding an appropriate solution, and that's what our... That's their approach that we're advocating for.
Are you... Were you gonna comment on that, or are you just waiting for Bill?
You could. I just wanted to add on just a little piece to what Christopher said, that in as much as it is in our interest to come up with a comprehensive solution between all the different cities and the county involved, as far as individual development parcels are concerned, when they come to us, then they just talk about their frontage. And at this time, we don't have all the applications in, so we cannot just wait for a long time. So these two things are happening at the same time. Initially, we knew just about the cross talk. Now we just found out about the all sub 303, and who knows, the racetrack might be converting to another similar or some other use, or what will come on the south side. We know about PV303. So trying to time these different private developments with a capital project, which might be more comprehensive, looking at all the lanes and all the potential traffic that could go either west to Loop 303 or east, even up to Litchfield Road, we really have to think of it in a very comprehensive fashion between different government agencies through whatever IGAs we may need to get into, and hopefully some cost sharing, because we don't want to foot the whole bill. We are not the sole beneficiaries. In addition to that, we want to make sure that the private developers who are going to get benefit from this pay their fair share too. So I just wanted to add that this is a little bit complex, as we all know.
Okay. Bill?
I've heard a couple of things. First was the concept of this comprehensive thing, and I don't wanna... I really don't wanna be argumentative about it, but we're not really being comprehensive if we haven't even talked to the city of Litchfield Park yet. That takes comprehensive right off the table. So please, when we think about that, we have to do it. A couple of years ago, I mentioned we needed to look at Camelback on a CIP perspective because it... And we talk about funding, and that's a MAG issue. We have spent millions of dollars in this west, southwest valley on a bridge across I-10 and on a tunnel underneath Litchfield Road. Meanwhile, Camelback has remained completely ignored. So I don't think we can wait for MAG. I know it's not in the tip. I know we can't, you know, there's a lot of things that are prohibiting us from getting MAG money to work on this project, and comprehensive generally means a law... And, and comprehensive generally means a long time. We don't have a long time. These developers want to develop the property now, and they want to get moving. So we're going to have to be fast and, and work through it. So I'm, just, leave it to the roadway on that. The other, the other issue or question that I had was, you talk about, about trying to achieve the timing, working with all the different developers, et cetera. Do we have any leverage with that whatsoever?
Can we do with the roadway?
We, we will be issuing the permits for any work they need to do in the right-of-way, so we do have some.
Yeah, permitting of the roadway, but nothing will stop Glendale from saying yes, nothing will stop the county from saying yes, nothing will stop them from issuing building permits and starting those things. So the only leverage we have is, is at the roadway. We can say, you can build the building, but we're not going to let you in. Is that, is that, do we truly have that leverage?
That would be fair, and in fact, that was going to be.
Madam, I'm sorry to speak up. The answer's going to be no. There is going to be, in Arizona case law, that if you have a parcel of property, you have a right to access onto an adjacent roadway. You can adjust where that access point is. They don't have an absolute right to where they place that access point, but you can't landlocked a piece of property.
Our ability to leverage this is not.
It's the access point, not necessarily the access.
Correct. So, so I, I think from the, from the residents that are listening to this and what's happening, there's a great deal of concern about what is going to happen on Camelback. And in addition to the hundred other reasons why people in Palm Valley are concerned about these developments in particular, I think we've been concerned about the parcels that we already have south of there, had, should they develop. It's already coming. So I mean, we've, they're already zoned, they're already, so we have to find a solution. And this isn't something we can drag out for a longer period of time. So we don't have a lot of leverage. I know the, the comprehensive nature, and we think we've got some pieces, but we're going to have to be very quick to make sure we protect our residents on these developments, that we cannot control them getting the green light from the other municipal jurisdictions.
Cherry?
I guess that brings up what I was kind of wondering about also. When we look at the road as a whole, from Litchfield all the way to the three oh three, we have several jurisdictions, obviously. And is this going to look like a hodgepodge? Because we do have houses that take that road? Or are we going to work consistently like we did on Bullard? I mean, I know that's just one jurisdiction, but we had many developers that we brought together for a consistent streetscape, for a consistent, you know, look and setbacks. Is that something that we can? I know we, like Bill said, we don't have a lot of leverage here, but is that something that we can work with the other cities and the county and, and see if we can get something consistent so that Camelback is another gateway to the city off the three oh three, that it just doesn't look like, you know, building, building, building on that side, and then our side looks really nice? We can have some consistency on the streetscapes, the screening from those buildings for our residents along those lines? Is that possible?
Mayor, Council, thank you for that question. So we have the ability of applying the city standards within the right-of-way that's within the jurisdiction of the city. Beyond that, we can work with our other partners, Litchfield Park, the county, Glendale, because they have a strip as well, to, because we're ultimately going to have to have an IGA, which I think Mr. Albert's going to talk about here in just a couple of minutes, and, and have those standards carry forth in that, so that there can be a consistent look. As far as setbacks go, each jurisdiction has their own setbacks, and we don't have, I don't believe we really have a good position in which to ask for different setbacks, because that could be akin to changing zoning on other properties that really we don't have any control over.
Ryan?
This might be a, I might have already answered it. So typically, if it's a development agreement in our own area, we own everything around it, we make the deal where you get to share a percentage of the, the streets and the streetlights. And this one is unique. So can Glendale say, I guess if they take it over, can they say, well, we don't, we're not, you don't have to do any road improvements, we'll just let Goodyear take care of it all? Is there, because we own that road there. Is there, do we have, is that built into every development agreement? Or is there a way that, are we, are we going to be caught holding the entire road from, from here to there, since it's our jurisdiction? Is that a possibility?
Part of the reason is that some of this jurisdiction is Maricopa County's. So we are, we are working with them on the IGA. And in this particular case of All Sub three oh three, the applicant has requested that this be annexed into Glendale. So then it'll be just between us and Glendale for that frontage. And that's the reason I know that the word comprehensive really doesn't sound very good right now. But truly, talking to all the different partners and working on the similar IGA format would be beneficial for the entire Camelback length.
Well, I guess my question is, can we, would there be a situation where Glendale doesn't require them to participate in a shared cost of the road? And, and we're left with having to take care of the, build out the entire road on our, on our dime, I guess, as opposed to shared with the developer or Glendale? I don't, I don't know. It just seems unique to me that there's three, so many entities in this area. So maybe it's a standard, it seems like a standard practice to me, but I was just curious if that's a worst-case scenario where they decide, Glendale for some reason decides, hey, we're not going to do that agreement with them. Goodyear, you have, it's your road, you widen the road, so.
Mayor, Council, Member Hampton, thank you for the question. I think it gets a little bit to some suggested stipulations that Mr. Albert's going to talk about in just a second. I mean, we believe, so the off-site roadway improvements have to be constructed to support the project. Glendale has that standard, we have that standard. So we won't get stuck, if you will, holding the bag on the frontage of individual properties. But if I may point you to the slide for just a second. If you remember, we talked about the APZ one. There's, there is nothing that can be built over here. So we need some, we need to try and see how we can fund the northern portion of that roadway in order to make it the full section. And so that's back to Council or Vice Mayor Stip's point earlier about MAG money and things of that nature. And we certainly understand and appreciate Council's desire in order to have a comprehensive approach, do it quickly, so that the roadway is all complete from end to end. But there are some things that we need to work through in order to, to actually have that happen. If that, I hope that answers your question.
I don't, the MAG concern we, because of, of lack of funds and already proprietor that we made up the schedule, and there isn't, there isn't a place for something like this, you know, where you bring it in and all of a sudden, most of those have been taken up. So it, I, I would propose to the, it's not my developer, and I'm not in it, you know, but it's me, if a company wants to come and things are really not working, they need to be a partner in this too, and extend it right away and help with the financing of it. I don't know what the, I don't know how we would do a contract where you'd have everybody working together, and maybe there'd be some payback to certain, you know, to Goodyear, or payback to the developer or whatever. But it would seem to me that we ought to really work hard at bringing all the partnerships together and work this out. So, yes, go ahead, Molly.
So also my concern is if they only want to work from one hundred and fifty-second to three oh three, we're still going to have thousands of trucks coming down on Camelback, starting at Litchfield Road. And they're going to damage our roads. And it, those roads aren't built for that heavy traffic and for those big trucks. So we need to remember or even think about that, or have that maybe in the agreement, whatever, because it's not, it's just not a one-time cost. It'll be a maintenance cost for as long as they're rolling those trucks up and down that roadway. And it shouldn't be all borne by the city of Goodyear. And I'm also concerned that the County Planning and Zoning Commission seems to think we would not be interested in a project of that magnitude, from what I can gather after listening to some remarks from the last hearing. And a lot of times when the county is issuing their permits, they don't notify us, because we're not within a hundred feet or whatever their requirement is. And I just want the public to know that we very much are interested in all of the development that goes on three oh three. And anytime the county land touches one of our boundaries, we want to be in on the conversation as well, because we do care about that, and we're concerned about it. And the remark that six years ago we would not have opposed this might have been true six years ago, but we didn't have all of Palm Valley built out, and we didn't have the development that we have today. So our job is to protect our residents and to protect their quality of life and to protect their safety. And this is what we're trying to do. We, we're in favor of progress, and we're in favor of development if it's done thoughtfully and carefully, and it is shared revenues with everyone, not necessarily the revenue, but the cost of, of building it. And I know you three gentlemen are on top of this. Rebecca promised us we had a little leverage somewhere to do something, and I'm not sure what. Maybe she was going to pull a trick out of her hat or something. But we do thank you for doing that. And, and just keep in mind where we're coming from, is that we're just so concerned about Camelback Road not being made to the standard it needs to be if we're going to have either one of those developments coming in, let alone both of them.
And what, Laura, did you have any more?
Yes, I do. Is the All Sub site, is that going to be like a Glendale Island there? I mean, to the east and west of it, is it county?
Yeah, Council Merkano, that is correct, that it's county to the east and west of that development.
So their vested interest is just going to be that site? Okay, and then south of that, where, south of Camelback, which is Goodyear, do we have any timeframe or, or understanding of when they might start developing that?
Mayor, Councilperson Kano, at this point in time, no. We're not entirely clear on what their schedule is for a project south of Camelback on that Sunbelt property. I'm just going to back up on this property here. Not entirely sure what their schedule is currently.
Okay. And then the, the cross-talk project, which I think the challenge with that is that it really closely intersects with the residential, then we've got one hundred and fifty-second. And that, I've been, I think we've all heard the concerns from residents about a hundred, protecting one hundred and fifty-second, making sure trucks don't go down it, their ability to get in and out with the trucks and things like that. So just curious, since we had the initial meeting and, and talk about, I know they, they said that the cross-talk was going to have their turnoff prior, or prior to getting to one hundred and fifty-second. But just was wondering if there's any updates about the impacts on one hundred and fifty-second with this development?
Mayor, Council Merkano, we have not seen the next traffic study yet for the cross-talk. That was to be submitted, but we haven't yet received the seminal for that traffic study. So we had our comments that we sent out, and we're waiting for that seminal.
All right, thank you.
When I think of Litchfield and Camelback, like going out to Fries or going to the base that way, and the number of backup on Litchfield, and the timing. I mean, you're going to have to have good timing in that light. It's under Litchfield, I guess that's their, under their control. But I can see, not ten minutes, I can see fifteen, twenty minutes, all the way down to Indian School and further. If trucks are going to be going that route and not exiting and going to three oh three. And it's going to be, in my view, a nightmare. But we don't have much jurisdiction over that, so I just place that caution out. Are we, any other questions? How are we on this? We have, are we?
We have a couple.
Go ahead, then.
Okay, so this graphic here shows the Camelback Road cross-section in the jurisdictions at this time, and it's pretty consistent from Perryville to the Goodyear City limit on the east side, this, that Glendale Strip Annex. So the current, currently Goodyear has sixty-three feet of right-of-way, which extends from forty feet south of the center line to twenty-three feet north of the center line. And then north of Goodyear's right-of-way, you have the ten-foot Glendale Strip Annex. Like I said, it's consistent from Perryville Road all the way into Litchfield Park. And then with this project, Glendale would annex an additional thirty-two feet that would be part of the project development dedication. So then you'd have sixty-five feet in the north, which is your full half-width for a city, major arterial street. And then on the south, we'd have forty feet. And then another twenty-five feet would be developed, or sorry, dedicated with the development to the south, to give you the full one hundred and thirty-foot cross-section. And that's your three lanes, median three lanes, with all of the Goodyear requirements like you see on Indian School Road. So we've been working on IGA with Glendale and McDot for county developments, or residential development, which is just north of Sadea. It's between Perryville and Citrus. We've been working quite some time here on a development, sorry, an IGA for that development that basically puts all the permitting and approvals on Goodyear, but everything would be built to Goodyear's requirements, and everything would be operated and maintained by Goodyear when it's completed. So that Goodyear, we have one jurisdiction maintain this fully-built-out roadway, and it's a great benefit to the city, because right now, all of these Camelback Road sections are very old roads that are very minimal standards. So we'd be happy to take on a six-lane road that's fully-built-out to city requirements and, and, and take on maintenance of that. So it'd be much better for us than trying to maintain these very old roads. But as we mentioned before, the IGAs would talk specifically about some traffic signals. And depending on where the signal is or who's adjacent to it, the responsibilities would, would be the responsibility of whoever, whether it's another agency, whether it's developer, just whoever's most appropriately to be responsible for that signal. So, so the IGA would not place the signal responsibility on us. We would ultimately operate, maintain the signals, but the cost of the signals would be paid for and shared by the most appropriate parties for each location. And, and so we would just continue applying this IGA model to all of these developments along this corridor as, as properties develop on the north side. So I guess there are questions, we have recommendations and questions about the IGA. So tonight, we have a recommendation, and, and the recommendation is that we're recommending a request that the city of Glendale include a stipulation that the city of Goodyear review and approve the traffic study for the project, and that the city of Goodyear reviews and approves roadway improvements and driveway locations prior to the first permit being issued.
Any questions?
We believe this is what we could ask for right now, and at this moment, we don't know what more could we ask for. We'll have to just rack our brains a little more in case there's anything else, but this is what we could think of.
Bill?
Okay, I have a, I held the rest of the questions from traffic until the very end here, so. The industrial parcel that is in Goodyear south of Camelback, which Christopher, I think you said was PAD right now, I think is already zoned industrial. Between that and the actual PV three oh three, do we know about when that was zoned? I want to say oh seven or oh eight, but.
So I'm going to kind of piece together a couple of maps for you here, if I may, for just a second. Here we go. Mayor, Vice Mayor Stip. So all of this property, all the way to the point here, was originally all included part of PV three oh three, the master. all included part of PV 303, the master PV 303 that went across Camel, uh, 303 to Camelback, and then down all the way almost, almost to Thomas, or actually to Thomas. And all that was one big project, and my recollection off the top of my head is that was the mid-2000s.
Yeah, okay. So, um, and, and that's been in existence as long as Palm Valley 5 and all the rest of that, I think that was all zoned roughly the same times, correct?
I guess be part of the 1600, what age that it was sold at the beginning.
Um, my recollection is that Palm Valley, the master plan of Palm Valley was a little bit earlier than PV 303, the entity of PV 303, generally about the same time, but I think Palm Valley came first.
But we didn't start buying, buying and selling homes in Palm Valley 5 until '07, '08, which would have been roughly the time that, that had, the fact that this is zoned industrial is not, should not be shocking to anybody.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, that, well, I'll be...
I think I was on the council when that happened.
Yeah, I'll be fairly generic with that, so...
I was there when you did that whole triangle.
So the second question I have is, do we know who is developing this Glendale project?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, Mayor, Vice Mayor Stip, the applicant is an LLC, Allsup, L, 303 LLC, which is the managing member that signed that, uh, application to Glendale is Mr. Kevin Zerwinski, who is also, uh, the managing member of, uh, what's going on in PV 303. He's part of Merit Partners.
Merit Partners, okay, very good.
Yes, sir.
Um, thank you. And then just finally, uh, you know, we, from a consistency perspective, we, we opposed what was happening at the golf course. Uh, and we, as a council, said, uh, we, we need to get more assurances and we, we need to oppose that. Not surprising the Planning and Zoning Commission approved that and moved it forward to the Board of Supervisors. Um, I, I think from a consistency perspective, we probably need to same, take the same position on Camelb- on this, uh, pos- property from Glendale. That we, look, we're not in favor of this until we can get a whole bunch of things worked out before we go, um, because there's, there's a lot of moving parts in this, and I think the way that we worded our opposition was pretty, pretty fair to the property owner that, look, we're gonna be in, we're, we're in opposition to this until we can get these things resolved. However, I do really, I think it's really important for not only us, but any residents that are listening or, or anyone else to remember that these property owners have the right to develop their property. But we also have to put in 110% effort to protect our residents, our residents. And that in, that includes improving the regional traffic flow, which means all the way from Litchfield all the way to the 303. We need to signalize the cross-streets so that we have safe ingress and egress to Camelback because it's gonna be now a major thoroughfare. And we also need to, and I don't think we wait until the development comes in, but we need to be very clear about the prohibit, prohibiting traffic through the Palm Valley 5 development off of Camelback. Putting up a tiny little sign that says, you know, no truck traffic is not sufficient. We have got to be very clear about that as residential only, uh, local deliver, I mean, and that sign's gotta be big, um, because that is, if we don't, if we don't establish that before we get into this development, we are gonna play catch-up in the worst way later on. Um, so I would urge us to take the same position with this development as we did with the other one, knowing that we have no control and we don't hold any of the cards on whether this gets developed, but they need to understand that we're not, we're not in favor of it until we can get these things met. And I think those are the things that you're recommending. I just want to take a much stronger position as a city going forward.
Joe?
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with you, Bill, on that. If those pieces are in there, uh, that would be the position. But I do see this as a different than the golf course, and where I see it different is, and I realize that you have the right to develop your property, but when people are building a home and you see a golf course, you assume it's gonna be a golf course, you know what I mean? As opposed to something that's open land. So I do, I do see it as a difference, but I do agree with you that we need to make sure the pieces that you're putting in there, that has to be taken care of, that gets resolved before we can even think about, um, uh, we should be opposing it until those things are resolved. I tend to agree with you there.
Brandon?
I agree as well. Yeah, it's gonna be a big traffic headache there if we don't get those things resolved before all of these, uh, all of these big, large traffic users are in there. I mean, just driving down that road, I, I think it's one of the few roads that I know of where there's a canal, if you, there's no barrier. If you go to the right, you're gonna fall in the canal. So it's very, it's, it's very unsafe type road. I don't know any other good road in Goodyear like that, but, so yeah, I think a lot of things need to be corrected because I hate to see a semi at night in that canal and other people potentially as well. But, um, but yeah, so I would just, I agree. I think we need to be strong about it. I mean, consistent, like you're saying as well. It might not do anything, but it's still gonna be our position that we think the roads need to be safer before we have these larger industrial users. We're not opposed to growth necessarily, but in, in the right time and with the right infrastructure and with the right plan in place, so...
Thank you. Sherry?
It's, it's gonna be a grand slam here. Um, I, I think when I heard some of the comments from the planning and zoning of the county, they misinterpreted what our opposition was. We want a holistic approach, and at that time it was just the golf course property, but it's gotta be a consistent approach. When we bring a development on, like when we bring Bullard Avenue on, we had a consistent, holistic, the entire thing, I mean, we had it all together. It wasn't piecemeal. Um, to say that we would have approved it if it was in Goodyear is not true. We would have done the same thing we're doing today, that we want a safe street, that entire line, like what you said. So I agree with, with how Bill's phrasing it. I want to see the, a plan, a holistic way to, how are we going to do this roadway so we don't piecemeal? Because we wouldn't support a project that was just piecemeal in our city, so this border is our city, and I think it's important that we get our partners on board. I don't think, you know, don't be nasty about it, we just say, this is what we wanted, this is what it's gonna take to get us to support it. We want everyone on board, so I agree with what Bill's saying.
Any, Laura?
This is a very complicated issue for sure. Uh, I just want to make a comment on the, the golf courses because, um, well, where I live, Palm Valley, part of that golf course has been taken away as well. Golf courses unfortunately do change over time, and people who bought a, uh, golf course lot now are going to be looking into new houses. So when you have land, I mean, it, it, things happen and things change. Uh, it, I, I was reflecting because I live close to the McLean Sun West, uh, on McDowell, and it's probably about half the size of the Allsup, but we've got a six-lane road, and so trucks are coming in and out, and it's sort of integrated into the traffic just because, um, the road's already there, and so you, you navigate around it. But that's just one entity, and that's, I think that's a huge difference. Granted, it's a, but it's a very congested area. It's, it's, it's sort of the core of Goodyear in there, but, um, that's only one entity, and now we're gonna have entity after entity, uh, u- using the same shared road. So we do, we do need that holistic approach, um, from Litchfield all the way to the 303 with all the, the partners as much as we can, encourage everybody to participate because it's for every, everybody's benefit, the, the, people who are going to be, uh, the users, whether they're residential or they're commercial, uh, law enforcement, everything, we just need good, safe, viable roads.
Any other comments? I think that we've heard all the information we need, and the exhibits were good, we appreciate that. Uh, oh, City Manager?
If I could, since I'll be the one who's penning the letter, I just wanted to clarify. Um, as far as the, um, the Falcon project, we did oppose the project-
Right.
-and then asked for certain stipulations, which I do believe were passed as part of the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, that the traffic goes west to the 303, for example. Um, also been having conversations with that developer interested in, in this partnership because I think, as, uh, Luca said, everyone knows that the Camelback Road needs to be improved. So I wanted to clarify on this project, is it, do you want to oppose the project? Or are we neutral on the project? We just need the road to be improved as part of the project? So is the use itself at issue for council, or is it really, if we can get the, the road, um, improved, is that, does that alleviate council's concerns?
Bill?
I think the way you had worded the previous letter was, uh, look, we're, we are, and I'm par- obviously paraphrasing, we're in opposition to the project. However, if it does go forward, we expect, I think we need to be consistent with that same message, that we are in opposition to the project. However, if it does move forward, these are the things that we would request be stipulated of, above, about the project. Um, and, and I think we do that from a consistency perspective. Um, we, we are, um, doing, we're doing the 110% effort to stand up for the residents, um, but with the realistic understanding that we don't control the fate of this project. The county does in one piece, and Glendale does in the other, and that if they are gonna move forward with it, we really need to have these other things done. Um, and that was my, uh, that was my piece with that. If Merit Partners is the developer of this, this particular project in Glendale, they have been a great partner for our city.
Mm-hmm, truly.
So I, I really don't think that there's gonna be, uh, an issue if the city of Glendale approves it, that they're not gonna work with us. I, I'm very confident in Merit Partners' desire to do the right thing for the region. I don't know about the other developer for Falcon, but I know this about Merit. Um, and I think that's the message we want to try to send. From, that's from my perspective.
Thank you for saying that because that's very true. What you're saying about Merit Brothers, and yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're incredible partners, and I think we need to-
Yes, yes.
But it, from a consistency perspective, we really need to, we need to do, we need to oppose it, um, and then get these other cities and the county and everybody to the table to say, w- we can't, we can't sleep on this, we can't study it for nine months, we can't, we gotta, we gotta get moving because people want to move these, these projects, and the only way to do that is, is by improving Camelback.
Well, out of this conversation, I thought we had consens- consistency on this. Uh, yes, Joe?
The only thing I would disagree with, I mean, as far as the letter's concerned is, at least from my perspective, I would oppose it regardless of whether we put the line or the roading in there. Forget it. I mean, in my perspective, I, I feel really strong that if you got golf course sitting there and you're going to industrial, the one that, uh, Councilmember Kano's talking about is, we put homes where there was a golf course, not an industrial where the heavy traffic was going through. So that's where I would tend to disagree with the letter because I think we would oppose it flat, at least I would have opposed it flat, period. Um, I can appreciate the consistency, but I still think on the opposing part, if they meet what we had asked them to do, then I'm not sure we would oppose it. That's where I would differ. I would oppose the golf course anyway, regardless of what they would have, would have come with. So that's where I would differ just a little bit.
I agree with Joe.
I agree with you, Joe.
I do. Any other comments? That was Councilman Campbell saying that.
I didn't want to confuse the issue, you know, um, as far as...
Well, I think we were opposed to it at one point, but then...
But I would have been opposed anyway on the golf course regardless of what they would have done.
But then, um, we did not have the jurisdiction.
Correct.
Uh, so yeah, we were opposed, but we couldn't, couldn't do anything with that, and, and so we went to the avenue of trying to make the best out of the situation, and, and this is, they're side by side. I mean, this is the same issue we were dealing with before, and we know where we have the power to make a difference, and, um, we, again, constitutionally, we cannot take the right away from the landowner or the people that want to come in there, but we can ask for special treatment and additional, additional help to help with the neighborhood and, and lives and safety for the children. I think that, I think that's our freedom to make sure that we continually be consistent on, that we want to be sure we do it right. Brandon?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, a lot with Joe as well. I, I appreciate the consistency, but I know with this one, I, I think industrial's probably the right use for this particular area here, so I don't know if I would, but not right now without the roads and everything else being complete. So, I guess, I understand why Merit wants it there is because, I don't know what else their uses usually put in that spot right there. So, um, I don't necessarily approve the, the zoning, but I do disapprove of the, the timing and that it's not ready for the amount of traffic that's gonna be down that road, so...
And I think when you showed us the neighborhoods, there is the distance, different from the other ones, the further distance be from the, the community to this facility. So again, what was the fe- that, that's in that with, in this talk with that measurement?
Mayor, um, it, there was approximately 1,725 feet from, from the nearest residential home here to the corner of the property.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Yeah, Bill?
You know, I just, I think we've got a similar distance between the UPS facility and the homes that back up that are east of Cervel and south of Indian School in Pebble Creek. We heard from one of our residents several months ago about hearing the, the, uh, the backup noises and, and whatnot. So, um, I know we may be talking what is geographically a great distance, but sound travels a great distance. So let's not be, uh, going, well, it's only seventeen, you know, it's more than 1,700 square feet. That sound travels quite a bit, and...
Well, I really didn't mean it in that vein, but-
No, no, yes.
Just comparison to the two properties, this one-
Absolutely, this one's farther away.
All right.
I mean, there are, there are differences, but I, I think we just, I think when we make, when we collectively make our decisions, we've got to be cognizant of what, of what that's literally and figuratively sounds like. Um, these are facilities that are gonna have backup alarms and all kinds, this is gonna be, yeah, you know, and as everyone points out, the, the, the jet noise is the jet noise for a very short period of time, and for each sortie that goes out, and then it's over, and then it comes back, but this could be constant. Um, so when we talk about protecting residents, I'm talking about that as well, so let's just be cautious, that's all.
Brandon?
I just wanted to verify too, the use to, in our city, across the street, almost across the street from that is the same use, right? Industrial use, right? So I just wanted to be, I don't know, not saying that we are, I don't want to be hypocritical though, that it's okay if it's on our side, but if it's on their side, we want it changed. But I think we're all in agreement that the road needs to be changed, no matter what, no matter, whatever happens there because, because of that, so, because of all the uses, the sum of all the uses there, so...
It's a dilemma.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else? Yes?
Well, I, I see the cross-stalk, uh, at the golf course differently than, than this one in that, uh, certainly it's the close proximity to the residence, but it's also the interaction of 152nd with Camelback and then the planned ingress and egress to the Falcon, whereas the Allsup property is definitely farther east, that greater separation, and to Brandon's point, across the street, we will be developing similarly, so, um, it, it is a dilemma because all the way to 303 event, I mean, except for north of the freeway where it has those contours, I mean, we, there will be development, and, uh, for me, the issue is the road. It, it's the road.
Okay, I, I think we're finished with our comments. Thank you very much. Do you have anything else you want to add? All right.
Yeah, actually, what I'm hearing is that it's not the, it's not the project, it's the road, so I'll, I'll make a slight amendment to that letter based on the consensus of council, and we'll get that out right away because I know the hearing for P&amp;Z is on Thursday. Thank you.
All right, and, and since we're finished with this, then let's finish the evening out. Uh, do you have any other thing you want to talk to us about? The City Manager. All right, Council, do you have anything, proposed meetings, anything you want to talk about? All right, then our next meeting is on June 8th, and our, it's going to be a work session begin at 5:00, immediately following by a CFD meeting, and at 6:00 PM we'll have a regular meeting. It's gonna be a full evening, huh? There being no further business discussed, this meeting is adjourned.